All right. I'd like to call to order the Monday, June seventeenth, City Council meeting at seven P. M. We stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
By the United States of America, Republic of Washington, a nation proud, peaceful, and just as for all.
You, Councilor Santiago and Councilor Friends are, he's absent tonight. Has had a chance, everyone else is here, you got a chance to look at tonight's agenda. Are there any changes that need to be made?
Mr. Mayor, I will propose we drop item number three listed under new business relating to Buxton Ranch, since that was resolved at a previous meeting, and replace that instead with discussion and approval of acting city manager position effective July one.
Okay, I approve a motion to accept the agenda striking the number three regarding the Buxton Ranch development, instead adding or replacing it with discussion of city manager effective July one. Seconds?
Second.
Second by Councilor Bailey. Discussion. Those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Very, thank you. This is the spot now where we come on public comment, place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to council regarding any matter not on the agenda and not scheduled for a public hearing. Members of the public addressing council are requested to give their name and city residence. Please try not to repeat yourself, questions to allow more time, more speakers. Speakers are limited, this is twenty-five minutes, we're limited to thirty minutes total of a comments. I have one here, any more online, anything else email. Joel Haugen, if you'd like to come on down.
Hard to work with, you probably can figure, but he might like to deal with you. That's why you can't work with anybody, you'll be around.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight's comment regards the Scapus, a Scapus Greenway that will hopefully come to fruition. Using the context of the ongoing fifty-year master plan, fifty years ago, the city of Tigerd wisely established the greenway along their portion of Fennel Creek. We've been beeped. Right after the first flood insurance study conducted by the Corps of Engineers was completed. This move was taken to protect themselves from the increased peak flows due to urbanization. Since FEMA only studies and maps flood.
Watch tonight.
Based on existing conditions hydrology, further development which may occur in the future is not considered.
With him, I'd be, would be better off doing that.
Can we mute them?
Len, are you able to mute on your side? We can't mute you. Thank you.
The city of Tigerd did something unique. They established a zero-rise floodway, which means the increase between the unencroached hydraulic model run and the encroached model run specifies the width of a floodway cannot be more than point zero four feet anywhere along the creek, instead of the standard one-foot rise that FEMA requires as a minimum. This means that map, the map floodway or the no-build zone will be much wider than it would have been with the just the standard one-foot rise. Tigerd had the Corps of Engineers establish this zero-rise floodway as part of the original flood insurance completed, flood insurance study completed in the mid nineteen seventies. This decision saved the residents millions of dollars in damage from the massive November nineteen ninety-six flood. Estimated at the time, at the time, as a thirty-year return interval flood. Not to be confused with the February nineteen ninety-six flood. However, the wider revised floodway remained mainly within the greenway except in the downtown area. A developer submitting a Clomar F, that's a fill, Clomar, based on only existing peak flow conditions can squeeze the floodway further than it has already been mapped. Such narrowing of the floodway worsens downstream flooding because they are then allowed to fill and elevate the floodplain outside the narrow floodway. This is called the loss of floodplain storage, which is not allowed in the entire Portland metropolitan area since nineteen ninety, so we're talking over thirty years. South Scapus Creek watershed and the Fennel Creek watershed cover about the same acreage and have comparable challenges. Given the current Scapus fifty-year planning efforts, it would be highly desirable to establish a greenway along South Scapus Creek consistent with the twenty twenty-three adopted stormwater master plan that you guys approved. To improve, preserve, and protect the area for future generations. Hence this public comment. Once this opportunity is gone, it is gone. So please do consider this now. I think I have a minute or so left, so if you would turn to the second page. This is from your page thirty-four of your, of your current twenty twenty-three stormwater master plan. Look at the green area, or excuse me, the blue area. And it's kind of a, kind of a color mix, but it's basically blue-green. Where it says floodplain and wetland. That was mapped with the hydrology study of about five percent of the watershed. So roughly eight hundred acres. So the entire watershed is about seventeen thousand three hundred and forty-eight acres. So they did this calculation based on five percent. So that would be consistent with a really good way to establish the greenway. This is current, you've got the data, they already did the hydrology on it. And so using that as an index going forward would be very helpful when you've got, you've got legs to stand on because this is not your twenty twenty-three study. So anyway, I highly recommend you take a look at this seriously before too much time goes beyond here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joel. Anything else, anybody else online? The visit, okay. Public, close to public comment, now we have a consent agenda. Tonight, we're looking at June three, twenty twenty-four executive session minutes, June three, twenty twenty-four, City Council meeting, isn't resolution twenty-four dash oh seven, a resolution adopting public contracting rule and procedures and repealing resolution twenty-four dash zero one. Resolution number twenty-four zero eight, extending workers' compensation coverage to volunteer. Discussion or questions? For a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Any moves to accept, is it, any seconds? Second by Councilor Jacobs. Discussion. None, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? There it is. Okay. Little good news here, I think you all remember way back a couple months ago, we had a If I Were Mayor contest, and we had a lot of good entries, one particularly good, and this one won our sixth through eighth grade vision. We sent it off to state and she got second place in the state of Oregon. I wanted us, can Tanya, Minister Maker, if you could come on down? Wanted to present.
Gotta get photo ops.
How professional. Thank you, let's, I'm gonna work next year a little harder earlier, we did a lot better job, Susan helped, but we need to get a lot more. We did get more submissions in St. Helen, so very happy to hear that.
Nice.
And want to continue that, appreciate it, thanks guys. Okay, the new number three. Coming to our attention that we're looking for a inter, a new city manager, our interim city managers contract expires at the end of June thirtieth. So there could be a time there where we will go without a city manager if we haven't, the new one hasn't started. So to cover us there, Dave Sukow has volunteered and to step up and looking for maybe a motion to approve Dave Sukow as acting city manager effective July one. A new city manager has been hired.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to do it in a two-part motion, so council has consideration of two different things that I'm gonna ask for. The first is to appoint Public Works Director Dave Sukow as interim city manager effective July one until we effectively have a new city manager working.
I have one motion to approve active Public Works Director Dave Sukow as acting city manager effective July one until new city manager is. Seconds?
Second.
By Councilor Bailey. Discussion. None, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, Dave, for sipping that up. And.
Yeah, I would like to make a second motion, it's my understanding that during the time that we have an interim city manager from existing staff, that they're not compensated at the city manager level. So I think it's only fair, since you're doing the city manager duties, regardless of who it is, from staff, be compensated at the rate that we use for our city manager. So my motion is, is that during the time that Dave Sukow is our interim city manager, that he is compensated at the same level that interim city manager Lehman is compensated.
And motion by Councilor Miller to. Acting city manager Dave Sukow to. Terminology you use to. Compensate him according to interim city manager Larry Lehman's contract. While he's acting city manager.
Yes, and to be specific, that is the, whatever the hourly rate breakdown is. Carol, is that what you need to be able to accurately come up with what?
Don't know what, I can get the rate.
You were.
I'll get it back.
Okay.
Seconded.
Second by Councilor Bailey, any discussion? I think that's good, really appreciate you stepping up, double duty there, we'll try to make it as short as possible, but we also don't want to rush into this. And so we'll discuss as it goes on. If there's issues, things that you need help with, let us know. Appreciate it, you did a good job last time, and I think it worked out good. More discussion?
I would just like to point out too, that you're not only doing the duties of city manager, but you're also continuing to do the duties of public works director, so that's one of the reasons why I think it's even more appropriate that your compensation, your hourly, be brought up to at least what the city, current interim city managers hourly is.
Appreciate that, but it's not necessary.
I understand. I understand, I understand you didn't ask for it, but yeah.
It's very short-term, but, no, it's a very busy time, got a lot of contracts, just in public work side of it, and do so. You get to negotiate union contracts as well. Any more discussion? Being none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We touched on this earlier. Number four, resolution number twenty-four dash zero nine, a resolution of the Council of the City of Scapus authorizing city manager to enter into a loan agreement with the Department of Environmental Quality for the purpose of funding the wastewater treatment plant phase one improvements and repealing resolution. Resolution twenty dash zero three. Public Works Director Dave Sukow and Contract Administrator Charlotte Baker with the staff report.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this resolution is a loan requirement by DEQ. They want acknowledgement from the managing bodies, the City Council in particular in this case, to acknowledge that the city is okay with taking on this loan. This is, I think, termed sometimes as a housekeeping type resolution, it's just a requirement of the loan. Just because we're pre-qualifying for twenty million doesn't mean that that's what we're gonna do. This is just pre-authorizing with DEQ that they will loan us up to that. We will evaluate as the project goes, only draw as needed to cover costs. As you know, the contractor is only requesting sixteen point four million dollars. So this just gives us some cushion for any unexpected change orders or things that may arise through a project of this magnitude. At the conclusion of the loan, drawn funds will be calculated, then the terms as far as payment fees will be calculated. So once again, just look at this basically as a pre-qualification and accepting that the city is willing borrow up to twenty million dollars from DEQ. Charlotte drafted this and can answer any questions as well.
This. We'll lock in this rate, one point eight eight, and the half percent fee. Sign the paperwork.
Is correct.
And we're pretty sure twenty million should cover it and to kind of overrun, I mean, that, it should not go above that.
It's like a twenty, that's like a twenty percent contingent, I think that's. We'll have problems if it's getting up here.
And. When would this start, interest start accruing and we start making payments? I mean, is it two years from now?
Yeah, so interest accrues as you, as you draw from the loan. So the first payment that you make is within six months after project completion. So during the, during the construction phase, we won't be paying anything, but interest will be accruing as we start to draw on the loan. So within six months of project completion, we will make the first payment, which is just a lump sum of all those, that interest that we've been accruing. And then we'll be making two, sorry, two payments a year after that, one of principal and interest, and then the second payment is principal, interest, and the point five percent fee. And they're planning on giving us, we provide them with the initial documents, and they're going to give us sort of a, an estimated breakdown of what those, what those payments could look like. But of course, they're going to be assuming that we're spending the whole twenty million, so it won't be exact, but it'll be an idea.
They're pretty restricted on what the money can be used for, wastewater.
Oh, it's very, it's very prescriptive, we had to identify all of the amenities being constructed at the plant, and that is all that this is. Follow that very closely.
Okay. Questions have been answered?
In, in terms of that bulk payment for project completion, do we actually like put aside money in terms of our year-over-year budget as we're going through the project? Or like, I don't know how long the phase one and the, the twenty million's going to be. So I don't know if this is gonna be a multi-year before we start paying.
Yeah, so, well, the, the project has to be completed by summer twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
Because of some other funding requirements, so.
Yeah, the, the biodryer, we're already on an extension, it technically should have been done June. They gave us an extension until December, because of where we were with the procurement process. And so for that portion of it, yes, if we're not done in December, we lose the funding being contributed there. And as Charlotte alluded to, we have until twenty twenty-six to get the phase one done, which is the headworks and grid chamber, which is applicable to this project, it's not the whole project, it's just that.
Do you feel that this will be something interim city manager Larry Lehman would proceed with before the end of his deal, weeks from now?
Yes, we're, we're actually hoping to sign this contract this week. We've been in negotiations, as I mentioned at the last council meeting, and I think we've come to agreement on that, so we're just working through getting all the contract documents drafted up and ready to go for signature. So hopefully by the end of the week, we've given them the go-ahead to get started.
Thank you. Motions, or anybody?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move Council authorize the city manager to proceed with the DEQ Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan Increase for Construction of the Wastewater Treatment and Phase One Improvement Project.
Motion to Council authorize city manager to proceed with the DEQ Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan Increase Construction of Wastewater Treatment Phase One.
Okay.
Second by Council Jacob. So this is a new resolution twenty dash oh three, rescinds twenty-four dash, all right, twenty-four oh nine, and it rescinds twenty dash oh three. Okay, any discussion? None, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? There it is. Increasing contracting limit for Smith Road Pump Station Project. Public Works Director Dave Sukow, staff report on that as well.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, as you know, the Smith Road Pump Station is an ARPA project that we've been working on for the past year or so with Rachi Contractors. It was a design-build project, which means that going into it, you work through the design with the contractor to come up with the most economical, best-fit scenario. When we signed the contract with them, one million sixty-six thousand was the number provided at the time by the contractors, what they thought be where this landed. After design and a review of some pump sizes, we learned that the pumps needed to be bigger than what they had expected at that time, which is the majority of this increase. So what we're looking for is they've, they've done a guaranteed maximum price right now of one point one four two four three seven, but in the interests of not coming back to you repeatedly, we're requesting approval from you to up that to one point two million dollars available to spend. Again, guaranteed maximum price is one point one four, but should something come up as learning does, we're just looking for your approval to that. So if with this approval, Charlotte would be working on the amendment with them at the one point one four two, just for clarity, that there would just be in our reserves if.
What's the timeframe on this, like when they're used?
They, they're ready to go, pumps are sitting in our warehouse right now, they will start, begin excavation next month, and we'll have startup by fall of this year. Project should be done by December of this year.
Thank you. More discussion, any recommendations or motions?
Mr. Mayor? I move Council authorize the city manager to approve a contract increase with Rachi Incorporated up to one point two million.
The Council Miller to Council authorize city manager to approve a contract increase with Rachi Inc. Up to one million. Seconds?
Second.
Really second. Discussion. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? There it is. Okay, now we are having a public hearing today. Next few, thank you, Charlotte. The next few involve our budget. Now we're looking fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Number six is to hold a public hearing to determine if the city should elect to receive state shared revenue. Dance Administrator Carol Olmer with the staff report.
Hey, yes, this, we have a couple of resolutions we have to do every year in order to receive state shared revenue. Well, that includes, you know, liquor tax, marijuana tax, third revenue tax. And we have to say every year, yes, we qualify. So that's what the first resolution twenty-four dash ten is for. The revolution, a resolution certifying that the city of Scapus needs all requirements to receive state shared revenues fiscal year twenty-four five. ORS two twenty-one dash seven six. And this is just, so it's a resolution we do every year with the budget. And there's another one that goes along with it, and I think last year you did them, approved them both at the same time, and that's twenty-four eleven, resolution declaring the city of Scapus elects to receive state revenues for fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five. So these two go together. And it is required for us to get that. The many, many thousands of dollars of state shared revenues. So that's all allocated, I learned today, based on population.
Oh, you have an agenda in front of you? On number six, that's the public hearing portion of it?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I.
Well, it's probably me.
Maybe I wasn't.
Probably me, I mean, there's no resolution on that, but we are approving, on six, what are we approving? That we will, we receive the state shared revenues? Then the next.
No, no, because I.
That one's just open the public.
I shouldn't have had to, I shouldn't have spoke before on number six at all.
Okay, so hearing all that, are you done then with both?
Yes.
Okay, so now we are opening a public hearing to determine if the city should elect state shared revenue. You online? Okay, so we will close the public hearing and then move on to number seven and eight. Said we could do them both at the same time, we've done that. Oh.
Last year.
So see it, we're looking at resolution certifying that, no, I'll read that. Resolution number twenty-four ten is a resolution certifying that the city of Scapus meets all requirements to receive state shared revenues for fiscal twenty twenty-four and twenty-five. Twenty-four eleven is the resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenue for fiscal year twenty-four.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Bailey?
I move that we accept resolution number twenty-four ten and twenty-four eleven as written.
Motion to approve both resolution number twenty-four dash ten and twenty-four eleven as written, any seconds? Council Jacobs? Any discussion?
I like money.
Yes, please.
Really appreciate it, I, I, I mean, to me, this budget seems pretty straightforward, be interesting with the new city manager, getting other views, opinions, I assume that everybody does it like this, but I don't think everybody does, so it's gonna be interesting, but I, good job on this, and any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? There it is. Good.
Right.
Moving on, number eight, twenty-four nine.
Nine.
Resolution number twenty-four dash twelve, we need to hold a public hearing to adopt the city of Scapus budget twenty twenty-four twenty-five. Hearing on the proposed approval budget for the fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five, making appropriations, imposing the tax, and categories in the tax, Dance Administrator Carol Olmer again.
And so, resolution twenty-four dash twelve, I just read it pretty much. This is adopting the city of Scapus budget, you know, with the changes that are in your staff report, who were requested in the committee, that were, no numbers changed, you know, the, no values changed. So as far as any dollars that we are budgeting. And this is to make the appropriations and to declare the outlawing tax levy, classifying the levy as provided by ORS three ten, oh six oh four, fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five. You can see the totals on, on the resolution.
You've added a couple categories, separating lines, all we did, like attorney budget, breaking down a little bit.
Yes, I took, and I've already done this, so I took the, the contractual, the contractual budget, I've broken that into two lines, be next to each other in the budget. And the, I took what was budgeted for attorney fees, subtracted it from contractual, added it to the attorneys, so it'll give you more transparency, scoring it, for us being able to see how much we're spending on attorneys. And we would do all the attorneys in every fund, not just the general fund. Did for every fund, that will also include the court attorneys, also are going into a separate line.
We had asked about consultants as well, that much more difficult to break, but you are gonna work on a report showing.
How to get you the information on consultants, yeah. Because I looked at the consultants and there were so many. How to get you the information on consultants, yeah. Cause I looked at the consultants and there were so many consultants can come out of that line, but they can also come out of contractual, like all of Dave's consultants, we, you know, we're all the engineers and stuff, consultants for all of our contracts.
Yeah, I don't really think of them when I first see consultant, you know, I think of master plan.
Yeah, and, uh, and the, um, and, um, planning, you know, it's in council approved. So not all sitting in one budget line anyway. So we need, I need to figure out from you guys if I know which, which consultants you care about seeing. Oh, and, uh, cause I don't think you want to see all of the, all of Dave's consultants for all of his projects.
It's nice to see some of these big projects we're doing with consultants of when is it gonna end? Cause then that money is now done being spent. Going forward, it might be money we have for other things.
Like the fifty year plan, for instance. So be the last year, be the fifty year plan. We don't have as many projects, really not many consulting projects this year at all. You know, there's, there's almost none. We've completed finishing the fifty, uh, the master plan now. And, you know, we're through with most of the consulting projects that I think you guys were interested in.
Great. Um. More discussion or is there any?
No, just for the record, all of the changes that Carol is referencing is in the, uh, council packet on page thirty six and thirty seven. And just to reiterate, there's no actual, um, year changes or cost changes. It's just clarification on various changes that we flagged during our review with the budget committee. Is that correct, Carol? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any motions to accept or? Let's do the public hearing. You now open a public hearing on our budget. Or Beth would like to offer something, you know? Um, anybody online, emails? We'll close the public hearing, move on to deliberations. Yeah, motions. This one is the one that we have to keep open.
All right, Mister Mayor, I'll make a resolution that, or make a motion that council adopt resolution number twenty four dash twelve. That is, uh, adopting the city of Scapus budget, making appropriations, declaring the ad valorem tax levy and classifying the levy as provided by ORS three ten dot zero six zero two fiscal year twenty four, twenty five.
Do we have a motion by Council Holmes to accept approve resolution number twenty four twelve, adopting the city of Scapus budget, making appropriations, declaring the ad valorem tax levy and classifying the levy as provided by ORS three point, three one zero point zero six zero dash two for fiscal year twenty four. Five. Second?
Second.
Bailey, any more discussion? All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Carrie's? In. Good. Um, the number ten. Um, are all the changes? Budget now that we just approved are all fees, fees and changes already built in? Hey, number ten, resolution number twenty four dash thirteen, a resolution establishing all fees and charges for the city of Scapus and rescinding resolution dash for twenty three dash eleven, a twenty four, twenty five fee resolution. But Works Director Dave Sukow, this is also a public. Staff report.
Yeah, so the way you introduces, I'm, I'm not gonna repeat on that, cause it seems you've done it. But yes, uh, twenty four thirteen, um, would rescind twenty three eleven. Annually, the city updates its fee schedules and that is what this is. Um, on pages one seventy of your packet is where it begins, goes the proposed fees for the year in red. Um, the notes to the right are where you can find the resolutions and ORSs and things that these fees are relevant to. To, I'm sure you all understand that already, but just to point out the obvious there. Um, so if there's ever any questions, it's easy to defer back to our website, find that resolution, find that information. I say that mostly for your constituents. If you have questions, this is a great way to find that information. Um, all of the department heads are represented tonight to walk through if you have any questions related to any specific department. I can speak on Public Works behalf. We are indexed right now to follow the twenty city average construction index. And that for this year is at two point seven percent. So all of the fees according to, uh, Public Works Utilities and Transportation SDCs, Utility SDCs, et cetera, are all based on that index. The different departments have different indexing they follow, and like I said, they're here willing to answer questions on other departments. I know that increases are not popular, but I do want to reiterate that we are a business that cannot fail. Our utilities need to survive for a lifetime and these rates keep us alive. Costs are going up higher than this two point seven percent typically for us. So if we don't match that in some proportionality, I don't intend we're gonna sink our ship. So that is why this is so important that we raise these rates. We do our best to keep our costs down, minimize this and only use these, but payment costs, I think, gone up, close to ten percent over the past few years. Chemicals and things that we buy have gone up, which is twenty percent. But if we don't follow some increase, we're, we're gonna get ourselves in trouble in a nutshell. So that is why it's so important that we do this. Just gonna step down in a few questions.
Thank you. Uh, one idea, I mean, we had talked about the water rates last month, um, and here, uh, what's a normal inside city limits size? Is it normally a three quarter line? What's standard?
Yeah, the, the vast majority of the services are all three quarter. Um, there are some larger homes that request one inch, an inch and a half on square footage and amount of bathroom facilities they have and things. Irrigation, they may want to irrigate their lawn, in which case they'll request a larger meter. Subsequently, to do that, they would pay a larger SDC connection fee and things for that.
But whether it's three quarter one, the basic service went up dollar nine. Um. And I noticed all the SDCP, so when I look at like a, a new residential house, um, let's see where that was. So, uh, normally they're about a three quarter, you said three quarters is pretty standard. So the SDC for water went from like ten thousand one thirty nine to ten thousand four. So yours, each brand new house in these like new developments, you're spending ten thousand four hundred dollars to set the SDCP.
The SDC fee, yes.
And then wastewater has five or five thousand plus, parks has some two thousand, transportation. Um, there's some, so it's twenty thousand dollars on a brand new house. Set it up. Oh, close. And then the ones that aren't in red, nothing went up. Back to same one. So the ones that don't go up, is that because the twenty, those don't really qualify for the twenty city average? Those are mostly permit fees and just fees, so Public Works fees. Those have an average that we can look at each year?
Yeah, anything that's kind of related to, um, construction costs, infrastructure type things, that's what align with this particular matrix. As far as the development, we talked about that earlier. Dan Laurie can elaborate, but there's other OARs and ORSs that dictate what those rates are. I don't get involved in that. If you have questions.
Anything that we could have raised, um, we didn't, I mean, the ones that didn't get raised, those are all items we could have raised or looked at, but those were, we made the decision not to raise the permit fees and.
I did have a question on, uh, inspection fees. It looks like we actually lowered the inspection fees for below twenty five thousand. Is that accurate or am I just?
So, no, actually what we did was we added, we added an additional bucket. Um, so previously for, um, inspection fees for the city engineer. Uh, the, the first tier essentially was, um, six percent of the engineer's construction value plus, um, fifteen hundred dollars. So what we were seeing is there were some smaller projects where maybe the only public improvement is say like the driveway entrance. We don't, we don't really need to collect the fifteen hundred for that plus six percent of the cost, because they're just building it to our standard. We're just gonna go out and inspect and make sure it was done properly, but it's not, say, um, you know, something that's gonna take the effort that we would want to collect that additional fifteen hundred for. Just being fair, to, to create a smaller bucket that would allow us to just capture those smaller projects. In terms of planning fees, uh, we did raise rates, uh, last year after we did our fee study. Uh, we did seventy five percent, uh, fee recovery. Um, you know, we could have raised that again. I think my, my thinking, and I spoke with Larry about this, was to be business friendly, to keep them set as is for now. Uh, we could reevaluate again in the future if we wanted to, but essentially we do expect that there will be some efficiencies from having uh, additional land use applications handled, um, and approved in-house. Uh, those are some changes we're looking at as, in the development code as part of the fifty year plan. And then recognizing also that, uh, Associate Planner NJ Johnson is, um, reviewing a lot more of the land use applications at, you know, obviously a lower rate, um, than, than my rate. And so that also additionally adds to just the efficiency and lower cost of us, um, processing applications. So for those purposes, I di- I didn't feel it was necessary this year to raise those rates.
To do that, you'd have to do a cost, cause we're, the resolution seventy five percent of cost. So if you're gonna raise them, you'd have to reevaluate the costs.
Or just raise it to the hundred percent that we were looking at before and maybe, you know, even roll that up based on, um, based on an index that we choose that seems reasonable. So I don't think we, we would have to do the entire fee study again. But at some point, if we wanted to look at that, we could.
The SEC fees, they're, they're paid and, um, at the time of.
Building, yeah, the, um, building permits are actually paid upfront. Uh, building permits, um, and SDCs are paid for at the time the building permit is issued. So it's at the very beginning of the project.
You said the budget accounts for the increases. Fair reason you wouldn't vote on this first to make sure it got approved before you approved a budget, or does that matter?
It's, it's never, yeah, that's never been an issue. I mean, if, if not, then we would, I guess, just make a mental note in our budget. And there's no guarantee that those revenues are gonna come in. Those, those are best guess numbers on projection anyways.
Thank you. Um. More discussion is? You retain a motion to approve?
Mister Mayor, I so moved that council adopt resolution number twenty four dash one three, a resolution establishing all fees and charges for the city of Scapus and rescinding resolution number twenty three dash eleven.
I have a motion by Council Jacobs to accept resolution number twenty four dash thirteen, a resolution establishing all fees and charges for the city of Scapus. Rescinding resolution twenty three dash eleven. Any second?
Bow second.
Second by Council Holmes. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, time? And Carrie's? If you could text Bob. Um. Calendar.
Okay.
Hey, we are almost to July and starting in July, July fourth, city office closes again every Saturday, nine to two P M in July, farmer's market. You have a planning commission meeting on July eleventh at seven P M. Do you have an urban renewal agency meeting on July fifteenth at six P M, followed by our council meeting at seven P M? July eighteenth, EDC meeting at noon, followed by a Parks and Rec meeting at six P M. Planning commission scheduled for seven P M on July twenty fifth. Um. Updates. Dave, do you have anything good to report from the city of Scapus?
Um. Oh, we have a lot going on on the Public Works side, as you know, all of the ARPA projects are moving forward very well. Or, um, you know, tonight signing the contract on the wastewater, that's gonna be a large step. We're excited to get the bio dryer up and running. Big bonus for us. Other than that, I just want to take a minute to say how appreciative I am of Larry Lehman being here. His experience has been really beneficial. Um, his energy to make improvements here has been unmatchable to me. Somebody to come in out of retirement and have the energy and just the desire to do good things for this community says a lot. And, and his past tenure here before rang through. I mean, he remembered everything left off and a lot of people and stuff. So it was, I just want to say, I, I really appreciate him being here, so.
You. Um, Carol, thanks for budget year. I saw your, um, in the newsletter, you had a thing on taxes and where your money goes and where it comes from.
Anything you guys want me to put in there, just email, send me something, cause, cause the goal, gonna try and continue this, I think, for, who knows, until somebody tells me to stop and like, you know, and start, it's, it's about educating. I know Ty mentioned the about talking more about taxes and how they're spent, that kind of thing. And I think we'll do that. I think I'll go through my. Anything like that, I'm totally open doing that. But that we get that information. I'm trying to make them shorter than the last one. The general one was kind of big. My goal was to not have it more than third of a page, but it didn't work that way for the first couple, but.
We, um, we did want to talk about urban renewal, learn a little bit more about that at a later time. I don't know if next meeting we have enough time in an hour to go through sometime later in the fall or something. Be nice to have Andrea or somebody explain.
I'm thinking it would be good if we, Andrea, I know will be very busy for November. Um, I think she would make time, um, but I think she, and she's totally willing.
Even come online or just.
I thought we, I thought we were trying to wait for the city manager, so. Start out with all of us, cause we don't know if some new city managers can know anything about urban. No, we'd hope so, but, uh, we'll kind of see how that goes. But, um, she, you know, cause I think we need to reorganize projects and stuff. I think we need to do major overhaul renewal, just because this line back in twenty nineteen is not a lot of what was done with ARPA. So, you know, we, it just, projects don't quite match, and I'd like to have good things to put in the budget that makes sense. Kind of stuff that's.
Maybe we can re.
Like Dave, like Dave looked at him and he goes, you already did all this. I'm going, oh, well, okay.
Now that we've a account, signed some money, we kind of know where we are and maybe re prioritize them.
Get the ones out of there that aren't there and.
Perfect, thank you. Lieutenant Fu Ellen.
Good afternoon, Councilor. Good evening.
Evening.
Um. Last week we conducted our, what was last week, I think, right there, interviews? Yes, sorry, it all blends together as well. Uh, last week we conducted our part-time interviews for the police department, have a part-time officer. So versus a forty hour, working a twen- twenty hour session, and we have candidate pressing through. The twenty-five-year veteran of Port Police Borough, that's in the background. So thank you, Dave, for assisting with that. One of the officers who was operating with Columbia County is coming back to Scapus. So we'll be doing that process with evaluation and testing that continued through the last phases of their FSE for field training evaluation program here with the police department. Um, been out of the community, as you guys have probably seen us. Um, you know, I did Grant Watts this past, um, week with the career fair and going out there also too with the, um, outdoor festival last year, so we're doing that. Um, guys are working hard and just trying to get some more help and have a sergeant spot open. If you know any good people, please spread the word. I believe Mister, Mister Jensen, I believe is in Nashville. I don't know if he's on right now, if he has anything else really to add. Um, but we also have recently what our officers went to a firearms and trucks course for, that was put on by DPSST in state of Oregon. And now we have additional fire certified firearm instructor besides myself, help me give some of that stuff to my, our fellow employees. So we're making some, we're making some progress and thank you guys for your patience. I know Mister Jensen's or not, I didn't see his name up there, but they have something else to add, and that's all I have right now for to go to the council.
You're. You are there, Mister Jensen, you can chime in anytime. Um, did you say that officer, he's, he's doing his field training in Columbia County right now and he's finishing that up, or is this a new person?
A very good question, Mayor. So. So I go into too much details. There's different phases with our F-Step program standardized, five phases altogether. Major tours, two, three, and four, which is the big chunks within the middle, and they're about four to five weeks each. So the other, the officer I did the first three phases and now he'll be coming back to the police department where he'll be under high guise and evaluation, see if he's, uh, needed a process for being, actually trained to also evaluate the job here in Scapoose. So that's where it right now, sir.
And the new, the twenty, the halftime person, you think would start in?
I, well.
Month or two?
I, I don't know. It depends about the course of the background, again, all that, those type of things done, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Bailey?
Nothing on my end this time.
You said it, Counselor Jacobs?
The Rec Committee is meeting this Thursday at six. Excited to talk about pickleball and disc golf, prioritizing our calendar for, prioritizing our projects for the rest of the calendar year.
Done, appreciate that. Counselor Holmes?
I just wanna thank everyone, all the counselors that participated in the city booth for the Outdoor Fest and all the staff that very quickly assembled all the resources for us. I think it made a nice experience for engaging with the community. They did leave us, uh, some nice little thoughts about the things they love about the community, so I wanna make sure that was up there, that people could see, um, you know, this is the reason why we serve our community. So it was a great day, and I, and I certainly wanna thank JJ and the library for all of the hard work. These things don't just come together overnight. So it was months of planning and we look forward to future years.
You did. Counselor President Miller?
Uh, yeah. Another thank you to JJ and all the volunteers that helped make the Outdoor Festival possible. And I'd like to read a couple sections from resolution number twenty-two dash eleven. This is regarding fireworks, since we are approaching the Fourth of July Independence Day, and this can be found on the city's website as well. I wanna just remind our public, because this has been a major issue for us that has come to this council in the past, and I'm not gonna read all of it, but I'll just read a couple sections here. Number four, it says, "Legal fireworks are permissible to use within the city of Scapoose on the following days only, December thirty-first and January first, and July second through July sixth, aligning with the holidays most highly associated with the celebratory and beloved nature of fireworks." Number five, "Fireworks of all types are not permitted to be used in city parks, streets within city parks, or on city property. This clause does not include the right of way of commonly referred to as streets." And last is number seven, "Legal fireworks shall not be used in grass areas, dry areas, or other areas prone to catching fire. Council urges the cautious and safe use of legal fireworks, including adult monitoring, the use of legal fireworks, safe handling, lighting, and disposal of legal fireworks, and strongly urge that a ready source of water be at hand when engaging in legal fireworks displays." So again, this is just in context of the Fourth of July, just a few weeks away. Thank you.
You. And thank you, yes, to JJ. We will address this probably next month, maybe have a recap of the Outdoor Festival in our next meeting. Thank you very much. I did wanna just maybe helping with some cleanup at the end, taking a little bit of job away from Jeff would be nice. Thank you, staff, for helping at the interview process last week, probably did there, really appreciate that and your feedback and observations. Career Day did have at Grant Watts, it was fun to spend a couple hours with the kids going through of what a mayor does, what a city council does. Well, the police department was there, and also Public Works had a big tractor, the excavator out front that we really enjoyed. Appreciate the city for helping with that. And I wasn't around Memorial Day, but were their flags up? Got a lot of, I got a lot of compliments of, really appreciated all the flags that we had.
We put, we flew them Friday through the weekend, just because we've not stopped, and they'll go back up on July third and.
You know, appreciate that. And, um, if nothing else, we are now gonna go into executive session, O R S one-nine-two-point-six-six-zero, thank you, Lori, dash two dash A, employment of manager or attorney, which at the end of it, we may, we may come out to speak on the record about it. We are gonna go into that now. Representative news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session is previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we'll return to open session and welcome the audience back in the room. Now, we are going to.
We're not recording, are we?
(laughing)
Enter her box on page. Okay, that really it?